Welcome, everybody. We'll start with Madam Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Commissioner Gault.
Present.
Commissioner Kayler.
Present.
Commissioner Watkins.
Present.
Mayor Paxton.
Present. We have a special guest here, Reverend Joe Beal. Where is Joe? He was...oh, there you are, Joe. Pastor of United Methodist Church. Come on up to the podium, Joe.
Broadway United Methodist.
Broadway, what did I say?
United Methodist.
Broadway United Methodist. It's good to have you with us, and we're gonna all stand and have Reverend Beal bless us, and then I'd like to ask Commissioner Abraham to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for this beautiful day that you have made and shared with us. We thank you for all that we have been able to accomplish this day in service to our community and to others, and as we gather today, we pray for those who have been in the path of and who are yet in the path of the turbulent weather along the coast. We pray for peace and safety there. We thank you for this great nation in which we live and all the privileges that it affords us. We're grateful for this great city of Paducah and for our mayor and our commissioners and all those who have devoted themselves to serving this community. May you give them wisdom, courage, and intestinal fortitude to make those decisions that will help make our city, our community, a better place. We ask that you would inspire and encourage us as citizens to participate in our community and in our government. In your holy name, we pray and offer you thanks. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Reverend Beal, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, you go on. I appreciate you coming by. Thank you. All right, Mr. City Manager, any additions or deletions?
No, there are none.
Okay. We will start the meeting, Commissioner Abraham, in the minutes.
I move that the reading of the minutes for July 16th and 17th and August 14th, 2012 meeting be waived and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Motions, Commissioner Gault?
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Certificate of Insurance and Performance Bond, Airmark Uniform and Career Apparel LLC, Gibson's Piping, Inc., Agreement for Uniform Services for Engineering Public Works and Parks Department, Contracts for Services for Fiscal Year 2013 executed by City Manager, Yizer Arts Center, Oscar Cross Boys and Girls Club, Declaration of Restrictive Covenants for Conservation, Notice of Cancellation of City Commission Meeting on August 21st, 2012.
Second.
Okay. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Minnis Boarders, Mayor Pro Tim Kayler.
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah ordered that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Okay. Any comments by our City Manager?
Primarily routine. We do have welcome Misty Jezz to the Finance Office as Executive Assistant, and also Mr. Henry Collins to the Police Department. I believe Mr. Collins is here tonight, and Chief Berry is here to introduce him to you.
Okay. Chief, come on up.
To you and the community, I should say.
Even Mayor Paxton, Commissioners, City Manager, and of you in public. Tonight, I'd like to introduce you to our latest, well, with your approval, high re would be Mr. Henry Collins. We're very, very pleased to have Henry come on board. Educationally, he has an Associate's Degree from Compton College, Compton, California. He has an Associate's Degree also from ITT Technical Institute, Nashville, Tennessee. He has 10 years military experience where he reached, attained the rank of E5 with Honorable Discharge. I think his background is military intelligence. Also, law enforcement experience. July 2009 to June 2012, he was a police officer at University of Kentucky in Lexington. And from November 1996 to May 2009, he was a police officer in Nashville, Tennessee. And he also had some experience as a Deputy Sheriff in Beaumont, Texas. So, I'd just like to introduce you to Mr. Henry Collins.
All right. Henry, it's good to have you with us. It's an honor to have you come to Paducah and work for us, and we appreciate that. I'll tell you, what I tell all of our new recruits is that we take our police work very seriously here in Paducah. We think having a safe community is a quality of life issue for our people. We've got good leaders, as you can see, and so I just urge you to take this job seriously and if you do that, everything's gonna be great. So, welcome aboard. And you got here through, from California to Lexington, is that sort of...
No, sir. I came here from...my wife and I were both police in Nashville.
Okay.
Speaking the microphone.
Yeah, why don't you come on over to the chief's place, sir?
People at home on television can hear you over there.
And she's not here, but his wife is Dr. Collins, so...
Okay. Okay.
I was saying, my wife and I were both police in Nashville for...I was there for almost 13 years. She became a doctor, and the reason that we relocated is for her to do her residence in University of Kentucky. So, we were there for three years, and this was the place she chose to relocate to for different reasons. One of them being that she's close to her family in Nashville. The other is, it seemed like a great opportunity.
Good. She...her specialty is what now?
Family practice.
Family practice. Is she with somebody, or is she on her own?
She's with Laura's Hospital.
She's with Laura's Hospital. Well, good. Good. Well, we need good police officers, and we need good doctors, so you all took care of both of those.
Does she need new patients? I mean, we could put a plug in tonight.
Always, always gonna add to it.
Any of you all would like to say anything?
What rank are we coming in, as chief or officer Collins?
He'll be coming in as patrol officer, but we will give him...we take consideration of his experience when he comes onto the page.
I was just wondering how I should address him then. So, Officer Collins, right. Welcome to Paducah. We are thrilled, thrilled, thrilled that you chose us, and we lucked out. I was reading your resume today, and you've got a wealth of experience in some large communities that'll be great for Paducah, your experience and your resume and your education, and we're just thrilled to have you and your wife in Paducah, Kentucky. We know you'll fall in love with the community. We landed the best police chief in the country, and he's still here. And we have a great police department and a wonderful community to live in, and a lot of things that make life fun. And I know you lift weights. I've seen you in a T-shirt, and I'm glad to see you hire somebody about my size, chief, for a change. No, I'm about the size of one of his arms. I mean, this guy works out. So, we got about three multimillion-dollar gems around town to choose from, so you'll find something you like if you hadn't already. But anyway, welcome to Paducah. We're thrilled to have you here, and I know you'll enjoy it, but I hope you do.
Looking forward to getting started.
Mayor Pro Tim, you got...
Well, I just...I was looking at your resume. It's very impressive, and I know that we're very lucky to have you here and that you'll do well here in Paducah, you and your family. Thank you.
Commissioner Gault?
Well, I hate to be repetitive, but your resume is very impressive, and we are excited to have you here, and I think you're gonna find a wonderful police force that you're gonna be working with. So, we're very excited to have you and your family here, so thank you.
I need to look at the resume.
It's pretty good. It's pretty good. It's very impressive.
You had Mr. Olympia on there. You had...here's our other bodybuilder.
Mr. Abraham?
Well, enough said about the resume. We had a chance to talk about half hour before the commission meeting, and some of the life lessons that he's shared with me is those intangible things that I think are very important for anyone, particularly a police officer. So, I look forward to you finding your niche here outside the uniform as well as in uniform, and welcome to the city.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. Good job, chief. Anybody else we need to pretty well take care of it? Okay, good. Commissioner Watkins? You better call the roll.
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. All right, Commissioner Watkins?
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Approving the Transfer of Real Property Located at 1400 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive to Hutchinson Properties LLC Doing Businesses 5H Technologies for Commercial Development, For and In Consideration the Sum of $1 and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Quit-Claim Deed for Same," be adopted.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Irvin?
Yes, thank you very much. This is for the transfer of 1400 Martin Luther King to a sole bidder, which is 5H Technologies or Hutchinsons LLC. They're proposing on building a 6,000 to 7,000 square foot structure on this property. We received this property in May from Paducah Housing Authority, so it's a pretty quick turnaround. We're excited about to see them get started.
Good.
Awesome. Steve, there's a little bit of difference between the price I read in the newspaper for purchase and the price we have here.
Yeah, we received the property from Paducah Housing Authority for $1. We're transferring it for $1. The $500,000 is the proposed investment in the property.
Oh, okay, so that was it.
Commissioner Watkins called me. He had that money spent. He thought we were selling that property for a half a million dollars.
That's the way the article read, but yeah, I got pretty excited.
Well, listen, Steve, you've done a good job on that, so congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Ordinances and adoptions, we have talked about these items, and so we normally go through them quickly. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Establishing and Approving the Fountain Avenue Commercial Construction Financial Assistance Program and Authorizing the Director of Planning to Administer the Program and Provide Financial Assistance to Eligible Applicants for Construction of New Commercial Structures." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the establishment of the Fountain Avenue Commercial Construction Financial Assistance Program, the program to be administered by the Director of Planning and approves an appropriation by the City of Paducah, Kentucky, in the amount of $40,000 for the fiscal year 2012, 2013, to fund the program. The program is essentially to accomplish the goals of Phase 1 Fountain Avenue Neighborhood Revitalization Plan, the plan which was adopted by the City Commission on April 17th, 2007, to promote the redevelopment of Fountain Avenue Neighborhood by providing forgivable deferred payment loans to eligible applicants to encourage new construction of structures within the Fountain Avenue Neighborhood for the purpose of commercial and office infield development.
Second.
All right. We all understand that. That's an exciting project. We hope that we have lots of takers, right, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Hopefully, people are gonna hear that this evening, and phones will be ringing.
Please call us.
Please call us. Right. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah Accepting a 2012 Kentucky Office of Homeland Security Grant Award for the Paducah Fire Department and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement and All Documents Relating There Too with the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency." This ordinance is summarized as follows, "That the City of Paducah hereby accepts grant funds in the amount of $78,979 through the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency for its 2012, 2013 Fire Prevention and Safety Program Grant Award for the Paducah Fire Department. These funds will be used for salary and benefits to hire a deputy fire marshal and for the juvenile fire center intervention program. Local matching funds in the amount of $8,775 are required."
Second.
All right, chief. I saw him just a minute ago. Oh, there you are. It's a good program. Good luck.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Commissioner Kayler?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving a Grant Agreement with the Kentucky Arts Council for a 2013 Kentucky Cultural District Grant for the Planning and Design of a Wayfinding Program for the Cultural Arts District for Paducah Renaissance Alliance and Authorizing the Mayor Execute Said Agreement." This ordinance is summarized as follows, "That the City of Paducah hereby approves a grant agreement with Kentucky Arts Council to obtain a 2013 Kentucky Cultural District Award Grant in the amount of $5,000 for planning and design of a wayfinding program for the Cultural Arts District for Paducah Renaissance Alliance."
Second.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Good luck, Lisa. Hope you can get some money. All right. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. We have some annual contracts here we need to support. Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Luther F. Carson Fore River Center, Inc. for Specific Services." This ordinance is summarized as follows, "That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Luther F. Carson Fore River Center, Inc. in the amount of $68,220 to provide an extensive youth performance scheduling, continuing with their tradition of the Class X Series. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2013."
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Entrepaduka for Specific Services." This ordinance is summarized as follows, "That the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Entrepaduka in the amount of $100,000 to be made in quarterly allocations of $25,000 to provide support to entrepreneurs in the community. This contract shall expire June 30th, 2013."
Second.
Okay. Any questions? We wish Entrepaduka luck in replacing their director, Terry Reeves. Hopefully, we'll be hearing about that shortly. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham.
Aye.
Commissioner Gault.
Aye.
Commissioner Kayler.
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins.
Aye.
Mayor Paxton.
Aye. Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing and Approving the Transfer of Ownership of the Real Properties Located at 427 North 6th Street, 421 North 5th Street, 625 North 6th Street, 717 Harrison, 517 North 7th Street, 511 through 517 North 5th Street, and 533 Madison Street, all located within the City of Paducah, Kentucky from Friends of Main Street, Inc. to the City of Paducah, Kentucky for the use and benefit of the Main Street Department of the City of Paducah." This ordinance is summarized as follows. In this ordinance, the City of Paducah approves and consents to the transfer of ownership of the real properties of Friends of Main Street, Inc., which properties are specifically defined within the ordinance, to the City of Paducah for the use and benefit of the Main Street Department of the City, and acknowledges that requests is outlined in the Resolutions of the Board of Directors of Friends of Main Street, Inc. and Paducah Renaissance Alliance Advisory Board. The ordinance further authorizes the mayor of the City of Paducah for the benefit and use of the Main Street Department of the City of Paducah to accept and execute a deed of conveyance of the properties.
Second.
Okay. Welcome, Ms. Lisa. How are you?
I'm good. How are you all doing?
So, explain this a little bit.
Well, it's something I'm really excited to have...to come here tonight to ask you all for. Since I've been here in December, I have been working diligently with our nonprofit board, who owned these properties or were given these properties in 2009, when the planning department was merged with the Main Street program, and they created the Paducah Renaissance Alliance. So, for three years, these properties have been under the ownership of the nonprofit, but the management of the Artist Relocation Program has been with another entity. So, finally, with this action, we're gonna be able to put the management of the Artist Relocation Program back with the properties, so that we can start to work and find a resolution of getting some new artists into the community and turning four vacant properties and three improved properties into something that's actually contributing to our lower-town neighborhood instead of just causing us, you know, a lot of money and grief and time and...
Right. Right. Good. Good. Yeah, I think it's a great program. Any questions for Lisa? You know, I was out of town, but I got...I read your pa...the article this afternoon, and I think what you said was you'd like to have some smaller houses and some smaller studios for people that are coming in. I mean, what we have in lower-town is the big homes with big studios, and it costs an awful lot of money to buy those.
Right. I mean, I think what I'm so encouraged by is that every week, I get artists from all over the country who know about this program and call me and want to move here. I had someone here yesterday from California. On Friday, I had someone here from Miami, Florida, and unfortunately, they don't have the means to buy a $300,000 to $500,000 home. So, the houses that the artists originally came here restored is now out of their price range, and that's not uncommon. I mean, it happens in every city across this country, that the artists always move into locations that are a little bit, you know, undesirable. They fix them all up, and then they can afford to live there. So, the idea with the four properties, the vacant properties, is to actually design a very small live-work space that looks kind of more like a commercial space instead of a residence, and that we would price them within the 125 to 150 range. So, that's something that's a little bit more attainable for someone who's, you know, just sort of starting out on their own and, you know, has a limited equity that they can put into one of these larger homes.
Yeah. Go ahead.
And very similar with Fountain Avenue, they would essentially build that on their own, but the plans would go through HARC, and they would be HARC-approved ahead of time.
Exactly. Well, as you know, in the lower-town program, they've always had a $2,500 assistance that we would give to someone who was gonna design and build a house. So, instead of giving out $2,500 four times to each of these four different lots, we're gonna have one property designed that's already pre-approved by HARC, that's already estimated how much it's gonna cost to build, and Paducah Bank has been very generous in letting us know that if we bring to them a qualified buyer who can get pre-approved for the loan, that they will work with us to get the property built for the artist.
And also, in the same article that the mayor referred to, there was $25,000 for...I know you have $25,000 in your current budget for lower-town, correct?
Yeah, for the artist relocation.
For artist relocation. There in the article, it mentioned $25,000, I think, for a restaurant, and it could be up to $25,000.
Up to $25,000 for a restaurant, but that would only be for one of the properties that we have, and I don't know that the size of these new buildings would actually qualify for a restaurant space.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was a little confusing.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I didn't mean for it to be misleading, but I think if you look at the properties that will be part of this program, I don't know that any of them would actually qualify for that benefit at this time.
Okay.
So, Lisa, are these the vacant lots that you're talking?
Yes.
Okay. Now, don't you have some other properties?
There are three improved properties. So, two of them have houses on them, and one is on 6th Street and one's on 5th Street. Those houses, we would like to actually convert into sort of also a live-work space, but have a renter on the second floor and then use the first floor as an artisan residence space. So, currently, we're spending $850 a month to support the air studio, but if we could renovate these buildings and have an income producing on the second floor, it would cash flow the space, so we'd actually end up saving money on a monthly basis.
And one of them was the Smedley Yizer as well, correct?
Yes. So, the third and improved property is the Smedley Yizer, which is the historic pre-Civil War house that's at 6th and Madison. It is very dear to my heart. I mean, it's one of the reasons why I came to interview for this job, was that I really wanted to see the interior of this historic house. I would love to see it restored. Unfortunately, they have been looking for an artist, and again, the amount that it would take to restore the property is beyond most artists' means.
How much do they think it would take to restore that property?
It could be a couple hundred thousand dollars. I mean, it could be upwards of $500,000 if you did it with all the bells and whistles on it. So, the idea from the board was that they've always wanted it to be a community center, something that the arts could use, the artists and the businesses downtown. So, again, we, as the PRA office, we are...have a space and a private residence or a private, you know, space. We spend $850 a month. So, again, we thought, well, what if we took that money, used it to help restore the Smedley Yizer, created a lower-town information center, because we know it would be staffed Monday through Friday, you know, nine to five, and that, again, we could have gallery space so that the artist, if a business downtown wanted to have a meeting there, wanted to host a reception in the garden, that would be something that we could do. So, we're a long way from sort of getting all the details worked out, but I think this is the first step in getting these properties back under PRA's control, so that we can start to put some, you know, move something forward.
I think in the article, it maybe gave the impression that we were gonna immediately start fixing that house up, and we'd be in it in six months. I mean, this is a process where you've got to try to find support, money...
Right. And we have. I mean, we've got some people in the community that have already said that they would be willing to help us with the project. There's volunteer hours. We have a design committee that has been working for two years to find a solution for what to do with this property. So, you might start to see some painting happening right away, just as sort of a little curb appeal that will help it. But there are a lot of structural issues with that property. There's some mold that we have to deal with.
Right.
So, yeah, and nothing's gonna happen right away, but, I mean, I think having a plan plan and having a direction and something to work for is better than where we've been in the last three years.
Right. Which is not very good. I mean, we, we haven't been accomplishing a lot in the last three years. And we've had individuals that wanted to buy that house, that particular house, and we, we ended up not selling it, so now we still have it. So for you to come up with a plan like that, I think is commendable. And if you can pull it off, great. If you can't pull it off, you'll try something else. I mean, it's that simple.
Right.
So...
And even with the, even with the two improved properties, not the historic house but the other one, you know, even if we can get some life in there and usefulness until an artist can come and buy it and use it for their own live-work space, at least it's contributing to the community...
Right.
Instead of being a negative.
Right. Any other comments for Lisa? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, that's an introduction, so we won't be voting on that. We have Commissioner Kaler.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two 2013 Dodge Charger Pursuit Vehicles for the City of Paducah's Police Department. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the Finance Director is authorized to pay the total sum of $56,452.40 to Freedom Dodge for the purchase of two 2013 Dodge Chargers for the City of Paducah's Police Department in compliance with the Kentucky State Purchasing Contract.
Second.
Pretty standard, right?
Straightforward.
Straightforward. Any questions for Rick on that?
I have one quick one. The Kentucky State, the contract, can you just explain why we don't go local?
Okay.
Is there all that way? All the ones that are coming up are all that way?
Correct. For example, whenever we have a purchase that's over $20,000, normally we would bid that locally. And a lot of times, we would only get one bid, which is not a competitive bid when you're only getting one bid. And typically, that local vendor would market up $300 to pay the shipping, to receive the vehicle, and then deliver it to us. Whereas on a state contract, the state has contracts, like we have long-term contracts, for purchasing vehicles, equipment, backhoes, and those kind of things. And we take advantage of those for efficiency purposes so that we don't go through a lengthy bid process over $300 for the city, because the city actually does not save money by purchasing it locally. We actually spend more money because we have to pay the shipping to deliver it here. Now, we do have to send individuals to go get those vehicles and bring them back to us. But when we have the state contracts in place, we actually can use that contract, put in a purchase order, and purchase those so long as we've already got the funds available to bank those purchases. So every one of these purchases that you're seeing this evening are being made off a state contract for that participating dealer who competed for that state contract.
I get, I get that question a lot too, Carol.
I get it all the time, so...
But, but the one thing about the local vendors is that they do get all of the, I guess, maintenance on those vehicles, and that's, and that's a big part of their business as well. We, if we need maintenance and we need to go outside our shop, they, as, as the representative of that manufacturer, they will get that business. So it's not like they're not participating at all in that.
Okay.
Thank you, Rick. All right, Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of three 2013 Ford Police Interceptor Pursuit Vehicles for use by the Paducah Police Department. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the Finance Director is authorized to pay the total sum of $86,066.64 to Crossroads Ford Lincoln, Inc. for the purchase of three 2013 Ford Police Interceptor Vehicles for the City of Paducah's Police Department in compliance with the Kentucky State Publishing Contract.
Second.
Any questions? Mr. Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2013 Chevrolet Suburban for the use by the Paducah Parks Department. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the Finance Director is authorized to pay the total sum of $30,470 to Bob Hook Chevrolet Incorporated for the purchase of one 2012 Chevrolet Suburban for the City, City of Paducah's Park Department in compliance with the Kentucky State Purchasing Contract.
Second.
All right. Any questions? Commissioner Goddard?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2013 Ford F-150 truck for use by the City of Paducah's Fire Department Fire Prevention Division. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the Finance Director is authorized to pay the total sum of $33,786.12 to Paul Miller Ford for the purchase of one 2013 Ford F-150 four-wheel-drive truck for the City of Paducah's Fire Department Fire Prevent, Prevention Division in compliance with Kentucky State Purchasing Contract.
Second. Commissioner Kaler?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a 2013 Ford Escape for use by the City of Paducah's Fire Department Fire Prevention Division. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the Finance Director is authorized to pay the total sum of $22,028 to Wildcat Ford Lincoln for the purchase of one 2013 Ford Escape for the City of Paducah's Fire Department Fire Prevention Division in compliance with the Kentucky State Purchasing Contract.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? All right.
One thing...
I wanted, you said if you get a, get bids here in Paducah and you only get one bid, then that's not a competitive bid. Is that what you said? You have to have more than one bid for it to be a competitive bid?
Common sense, common sense would, okay, let me, I guess, phrase it this way.
I don't know what the law says, so...
Okay. Well, when we put out like a police pursuit vehicle, most, you know, for the, for, I guess, the past 15 years or maybe even 20 years, the Crown Vic was the pursuit vehicle of choice of all law enforcement across the country. So when you put out a specification for that, you're not going to get a bid from the Chevy dealer. You're not going to get a bid from the Dodge dealer. You're not, and you're going to get a bid from our local Ford dealer on that. So when we put that out competitively, we know that we're only going to get one bid back, and it's going to be from our Ford dealer here locally. Typically, we don't get bids from the other dealers because they don't cross over into each other's territory. For, I don't know, I don't, I'm not a car dealer, so I don't know that. But when we go to bid vehicles like right now, they, they stopped making the Crown Vic. So as a result of that, all law enforcement across the country is trying to find its pursuit vehicle of choice, and now you've, you've seen a lot of Dodge Chargers out there. Now Ford is starting to make a new vehicle as well. And we've bought Chevy Impalas over the past two or three years. So we're trying to find that spot of vehicles that we need for our police, our police force. The purpose, the purpose for that is for parts. If you are trying to supply parts for every make of vehicle out there, you're losing efficiency because now you're having to buy every part for every vehicle you have, and you try to unify your fleet so as that you can keep your fleet moving as it breaks down. There's several reasons to do that. Those are just to name a few.
So, so when you bid it out, how many bids did you have, say, on each of these vehicles?
I didn't bid, we, we didn't, we didn't bid these. These are, these are things we can pick up, they're ready contracts. We can, I guess, use the state contract because we are a city of Kentucky, and if they bid it competitively for all the, all the dealers in the state of Kentucky to participate in, we can actually buy off a state contract, much like a lot of your city government affiliates can work off our, our government contracts that we've bid competitively here. We just use the vehicle purchase to purchase many of the vehicles we can.
And here is what I was, the reason I asked the question, I don't want to put you on the spot because I, I should have called you ahead of time, but I am going to.
It's okay.
But my thought process was, because I get how the state contract works, but you know what you can get that, for that price for? I mean, we see it.
Yeah, yeah.
$33,000, whatever.
It's actually listed, yes.
I mean, we have one Ford dealer here. We have one, you know, can we pick up the phone and call that local dealer and say, okay, I'm getting ready to buy this vehicle for X amount of dollars? Can you not sell it to me for that?
And they, they have told me they can. They can sell it to me for that, but they have to market up $300 to pay for the shipping for the truck to bring it here.
But what I'm saying is, when we say, look...
Actually, actually...
I understand.
That's piggybacking on the state.
Yeah. Well, actually, they cannot buy, and I've actually talked with some of our local dealers. I've asked them, can you buy off the state contract and me buy it from you? And that, and we, if we have to make the check out to our local dealer, we're not making it out to the dealer that has that contract. So therefore, we're violating that contract. So what we're looking for is efficiency in the process of buying vehicles that we can buy them quickly and get them to the service, the service point, whether it's PD, Public Works. Now, there's some things, for example, like we just opened a bid on two fire trucks yesterday, and the lead time on a fire truck is anywhere from six to eight months. Now, those are bid flat out competitively because you can't buy a fire truck off the shelf. Okay? You can't buy a front loader, a refuse truck, that's the one that picks up the big dumpster. We have to bid those competitively on that. But these, these vehicles that are throughput, as I refer to them, they're, they're kind of like disposable vehicles. You use them for a period of time and then you move them through. Those are things that we buy off the shelf and off the state contract.
Everybody okay?
Thank you.
The, um, the local dealers, do they have an opportunity to bid on that contract?
All, all local dealers have an opportunity to bid on the state contract. It's whether or not they choose to participate in that. They may have a business decision of whether they should or should not. For example, I can, you know, we have a local case dealer who has a state contract on all case equipment. We have a local businessperson that has a state contract on John Deere. So these are, the contracts are in Kentucky, but they may not necessarily be in Paducah.
Right. There's, there's opportunity for our local folks to participate...
Yeah.
...in the bidding process.
But the, the other part of that is, is they're, they're, and I don't know how the warranty work works with the dealerships, but when that vehicle comes in on warranty, whether it's Ford, Chevy, Chrysler, Dodge, I don't know how their reimbursements are made through that, but obviously, there's money to be made in maintenance on vehicles that they, that they get business as well. We don't take that outside of town.
Right. Thank you, Rick. All right, Commissioner Watkins?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, approving an employee payroll tax incentive for new full-time employees as part of an economic expansion project by HB Fuller Company under the Kentucky Business Investment Program, KRS 15432010 to KRS 15432-100. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the city hereby authorizes and approves the granting of a rebate to certain employees of HB Fuller of the city's license fee as defined under Article 4 of the Paducah Code of Ordinance, Sections 106, 1 to 183 and 106 to 184, equal to 1% of the taxable wages of Fuller's 14 new Kentucky resident full-time employees working in Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, which satisfies the criteria under, under the provisions of the KBI for a term of not longer than 10 years from the activation date as stipulated in the Wage Assessment Agreement executed among the authority in HB Fuller, or the receipt by Fuller of the total eligible KBI incentives and the local incentive, the amount of $250,000, whichever shall occur, occur first, provided however HB Fuller remains in full compliance with the provisions of KBI and the MOU. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute the MOU together with such other agreements, instruments, or certifications which may be necessary to accomplish the transaction.
Second.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, you got anything you want to add to that?
Well, by way of clarification, what we're essentially talking about is a 10-year rebate of the 1% payroll tax that is attributable to only the 14 new jobs created, not the 47 that exist. Currently, the company, on their part, is going to invest about $1.8 million and meet all the requirements of our local economic incentive policies that we have. So I, I would mention that every time one of these comes up, we, you know, we take a critical look at the form of the agreement and, and make sure that it is as clear and has all the accountability, accountability measures in it that we need. And in this instance, we strengthen this to have clear reporting requirements to the city rather than just the state for the job creation, so we can monitor that here. And we made sure that it's expressly stated in here that the 14 new jobs will always be net of the 47 that exist at the time that we start this. So we shouldn't have any problem tracking that going forward to make sure that the company is complying with the, the requirements of, of the MOU.
Yeah. HB Fuller came here with around 100 to 110 employees, and with the recession and everything, they, they cut that back. Now they're beginning to grow it again. There was some, some fear that HB Fuller might shut this plant down in Paducah, but it looks like they're growing, they're growing their workforce, so this is, this is good news for Paducah. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you. Okay. That takes us to the City Manager's Report.
We will have an executive session tonight on land acquisition. I, I didn't think a lot about what, to put in my report. I will just mention one thing. I did make my first visit to the dog park last night, and there were 20 dogs there at 8:00 in the evening. So that's, what, 10 days or so after the opening? And so I think that's a pretty good indication that the interest and demand was there. And I would also say that I think the way the design ended up and keeping both areas within that drive-around was, was the way to go. And I think the thing aside, properly, there's good parking availability, nothing that ticks away from access in for the ballparks alongside or anything like that. So it's not only a good improvement, but I, I really think that it was done very well in terms of the layout and how it was designed, so...
Yeah. I agree. I agree. Looks like they're, they're thoroughly enjoying it. So thank you. Commissioner comments?
Well, there's also a grant that's available, Jeff. I don't know if Cheryl talked to you about that, but it has to be applied for by 501(c)(3) rather than the City of Paducah. So I'm working on that right now for amenities for the dog park, so we could add some things like some boulders for the dogs to climb over and some other things to make it more user-friendly. So we'll see how that works out.
Good.
About a $2,000 grant.
Okay. Good. Great. Okay. Thank you. You know, the city has a lot on its plate on things that the city can control. We, we, we obviously, that things that happen inside the city, we can control those. And we, we work very hard to do that. There are things that the city can't control, county can't control, the state can't control. It's only the federal government that can control those. I made a call to Congressman Whitfield's office today, and he said that, explained this illness compensation program, and I'd like to read it and say that in 2000, the year 2000, the Kentucky delegation, which was Whitfield, Bunning, and McConnell, was able to pass through Congress, and the president signed into law the Energy Employee Occupational Illness Compensational Program. This law established the first ever federal compensation program for DOE workers who contracted certain illnesses as a result of exposure to radiation and other substances. The program, which includes special provisions for workers at Paducah, pay $150,000 plus medical benefits to the eligible workers of their survivors. This program has proven to be very successful for former Paducah employees and their survivors. But as with any law, there are improvements that can be made. Congressman Whitfield has introduced a bill that would streamline cases and allow access to care or benefits for survivors quicker. The bill is awaiting action by the Judiciary Committee as well as the Education and Workforce Committee. This program, like social security, is an entitlement program. So the spending is mandatory so long as you meet the criteria for the benefits. If you believe that you are owed benefits that you have not received, the claimant should contact Congressman Whitfield's office, and they would be happy to assist them. Since this program is administered by the Department of Labor, more information can also be found on their website. Congressman Whitfield's office said this is not a city problem, this is not a county problem, this is not a state problem, this is a federal situation, and that she, we as, as city commissioners should not get involved in this. So Gary, I know you make some money out of this, but we are not going to take, we're not going to take any comments on this.
Hold on, just a minute. You've got a public comment. Are you going to tell me tonight that you're going to block the public comments for these workers that came down here? That's all I'm asking you.
What?
I've got, I want to, first of all, I want to just say something about how great a job Rick does. Now, Rick and I have known each other a long time, and just bear with me, Mayor.
Gary, I don't want an editorial on this. I'll take one person...
No, no, no. I want, Mayor, you're not speaking for the commission. They've got the right to speak for themselves.
I'm the, I'm the chairman of this commission, Gary.
I understand, and I respect you for that.
And I will run that commission the way I want to. So sit down, and I'll let one person speak.
No, hold on just a minute. Hold on just a minute. You give me an opportunity to speak and let your voters speak, and they're in the audience, and you just...
Did you not hear what I just read, Gary?
There, nobody's listening to what you say. This is, these are workers that are injured. Now, I want you to give them the opportunity, and Richard, Carol, Gail, and Gerald have the right to...
I don't trust him. He's a two-faced, white son of a bitch.
Wait, 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 wait. No, no, no.
Okay.
No, no, Mike. That's not what we're about.
That's fine.
Hold on.
You can...
You were only three years ago. You're workers.
Okay.
Mayor, hold on, I, I'm not, I don't represent him, okay? Now, I just want you to understand.
I'm going to say, you can have one person for five minutes to talk on the subject.
Mayor, I've already told you.
And we do not have anything to do with.
Mayor, this is not about ducks, okay? You give these people, and ducks and dogs, you give these people an opportunity who live in your city, and let them, let Richard hear it, and let Carol hear it, and let Gail hear it, it is your problem, you do want to follow federal law.
Do you want to have one person speak?
Well, wait a minute, I'm the, the law says Ed Whitfield is supposed to help. If Ed Whitfield joins me to expose the problem, why do you, why are you not letting?
Congressman Whitfield said this is not a Paducah problem.
Oh, wait a minute, is that what you think, Richard, Carol, Gail, and Gerald? You've got a federal law being violated, it's not a popularity contest, do you all agree about that?
We have got.
If they have been violated, you, you've got to understand, the DOJ is watching.
What do you expect us to do about it, as a city commission?
First of all, Mayor, why don't you let me speak?
What do you expect the city to do about it?
I want you to admit.
We cannot do anything about it.
Will you admit?
Look, I feel sorry for these men.
Will you admit that the federal law has been violated?
We're not going to commit, admit to that, because we don't know that.
And if you recognize it, and you see it, and you hear it from them, will you recognize that the city of Paducah is not supporting your own citizens? Joe Tilly, Evelyn Jeffords, and Burl Upshaw.
Gary, I know that you make money off of this, and you're trying to, you're trying to help yourself.
No, hold on a minute, uh-uh. That person right there deserves a medical benefits, it's a federal law, and he's being denied. Carol, you're, you always are outspoken, and I really appreciate that. Richard, you've heard it. If all of you all sit by and do nothing, these people will die, this man right here is a successful. Bill, Bill, stop, come on, Bill, stop laughing at these workers.
Gary, Gary, we're not going to, we're not going to help these people live or die, Gary.
Well, wait a minute, now we're going to get to the real truth of the story, truth of the story. Number one, a press release was sent to all of you. I'm a two-time successful False Claims Act whistleblower, and you were here when this came out, when this all came out in the press. Mayor, what have you done? What have you done to help these people? Joe Tilly's sitting right here, Mayor, don't laugh at them, for God's sake, Mayor, it's not funny.
Look, you, go see.
Every one of you.
Go see Congressman Whitfield, he is the one that made the law.
Joe, tell him about Congressman Whitfield, how he helped you. Did you not understand that he's already got the letters where they wouldn't help him? Did you understand that the McConnell staff is rubber stamping the denials?
Gary, sit down and let one person stand up, or I'm going to adjourn the meeting, okay?
Adjourn the meeting.
All right.
You all will not allow the people to speak, that's what I want to go on record. And by the way, this, these were some county peoples too, people too. So Gail?
So you're saying the federal government is not doing their job?
Federal government is not doing their job, but it's in the Department of Labor.
Would you let me talk, please?
You asked me a question, do you want me not to ask?
No, I didn't finish my question.
Okay, go ahead, Gail.
So you're saying the federal government is not doing their job, and that you can do a better job than, than these people going through our federal delegates?
Now, Gail, if I'm, if they're sitting in this office, right, right here in this courtroom, or this chamber, and I've already overturned $4 million worth of claims, why weren't they paid beforehand? These people are going to get interest times 10%, and it's coming out of our taxpayer pockets. Gerald, now first of all, he's cut me off. Number one, I want you all to override the mayor, because he does, I've been here in this city, and no mayor has ever done what this mayor's done. Dolly McNutt, you don't, you don't stand anywhere near, she would always let the citizens in the county and the community to talk. You can do something, Mayor, join these family members.
Okay, Gary, let's not make it about the mayor. And, and here's, let me, let me, there's not anyone up here that's more empathetic with these people than me. My father worked in the Cascades, my father worked at Union Carbide, and my mother has been exactly where these people are, and her claim was rejected. So trust me that there's not anyone here that's more empathetic than me.
Okay.
However.
Who helped you?
She went through several people, all the processes she went through with Mark Bryant, she went through, you know, my husband, as you well know, is an attorney. I mean, she went through the proper channels, she's talked to the federal delegations, we've been through the proper channels. I have lots of questions.
I train attorneys.
Gary.
My point, my point is, let me.
Your, your husband is a.
Gary, sit down and let, let the commission, sit down, sit down.
Mayor, come on, chief, I think he warned you, you know.
All right.
And by the way, this is a great guy, my wife loves him, okay?
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Dawes.
My, my point simply is, I'm just not sure that this is the forum for this conversation. I'm very empathetic, as I think that the majority of this commission, and I'm not saying that you're not, Mayor, don't misunderstand what I'm saying. I simply just don't know that this is the forum. I, I'm very empathetic to, to you all, I, I, I just don't know what else to say, I don't know that this is the forum. I, I don't know if, if we shouldn't sit down with the city manager and Gail, or a few of us, in a day meeting and figure out a time and maybe work through some of these issues. I just feel like when we're trying to give someone a time constraint, and we have these people coming in, and we say, you've got two minutes, or we've got this, or whatever, maybe this just isn't the time or the place to work through it. Maybe we should just set up a separate meeting and give you some, whatever, I mean, and, and.
I think, I think, Gary, Gary, I think to these people, Commissioner Dawes said it very well, if we could do anything to help you, we would. We cannot, you're going to have to go through the federal delegation. If they don't help you, we cannot help you. But we, we, if we're going to do anything, and we know what we can do, we'll try to help you, but this is not to be carried on tonight. Commissioner, Kayla, would you like to say something? You, you sound like you had something to say.
I didn't mean to cut you off, Gail, I, it's a very sensitive issue to me.
I mean, I do, if, if you're finished, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Um, back when I came on the commission in 2000, a lot of things were, were happening out at the, out at the plant. Along those same times, the Department of Energy, they had representatives down here holding town hall meetings, discussing what was going to happen out there, most of that conversation was around the cleanup of it. Shortly after that, field offices were open for former workers to come and go, find the process, go through the process of filing claims. Along those same ti, at that same time, Citizen Action Group was meeting, and I started to attend some of those meetings. Mr. Ray and Ruby English were folks that I met during those meetings, talked about some of the things that you've talked about, Commissioner, and I would take notes of those, and being a freshman commissioner, I wasn't exactly sure what I could do to help. I made copies of those notes, and I, I brought them back to, to the commission. Now, the reason I'm, the reason I'm telling you this is because at one of those meetings, after I received an invitation to go to Washington DC for a special briefing from then-President George W. Bush, that meeting was rescheduled because of the events of 9/11. Upon that rescheduling, one of the gentlemen at that meeting handed me a letter to give to the Director of the Department of Energy, which was Elaine Chao at the time. Now, I didn't know exact, I, I got this letter, and I'm assuming the letter was talking about some of the trials that this person and some of his coworkers were going through. I took the letter, I go to Washington DC. En route from our lunch to the special briefing, there was only 42 of us there. We're getting acquainted on the bus. I tell this lady that I am City Commissioner Richard Abraham from Paducah, Kentucky. She tells me that she is the Assistant to Elaine Chao, the Director of the Department of Energy. I looked at this lady, and I said, I got a letter for you. And I handed her that letter that, 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 the person had given me here in Western Kentucky. Now, I don't know what happened as a result of that, but I attended those meetings, and I am fully in support of anyone from Paducah-McCracken County that has gone through what I saw at those Citizen Action Groups. I am support of any law that will make sure that those folks get compensated properly for what they've gone through. Now, I'm not exactly sure, we can't do anything as a collective group to do that, but I don't want you guys leaving here thinking that I'm not empathetic or sympathetic with what you're going through. I want you to know that right now. So having said that, if we need to meet and, and talk, like you suggested, with Mr. Vanderbilt, that's fine, but I want you to know that I, I was involved to the degree that I could be involved in.
Commissioner Watkins, you're the only one that hadn't spoken.
Welcome, sir. Well, like, all the commissioners up here, I mean, we, we're trying to make Paducah a better place to live, and we're public servants, and so we, when people come to us with things, all of us, I know, I have, I know everyone here, and we respond to those, and we do anything and everything we possibly can to rectify the situation, and certainly, if there is anything we can do as a commission to expedite a, a payment, or, or whatever needs to be done, whatever the federal government needs to do, we can help try to move that process along, but y'all will have to share with us what we can do, but it is a, it is a federal issue, and I'm not so sure there's anything we can do, but if there is, we will be glad to do that.
Commissioner Kayla, you were going to say something else, or not?
We don't have rights to representation. You're taking him away from us, you're not recognizing him.
Yeah. Well, okay, all right, the commission has said that if you all want to have a workshop at some point, we will do that, and, and, but I would like to, I will have, I think this commission should have a conference call with Congressman Whitfield's office, so we can better understand what the issues are. For us to sit here and to be in a vacuum is not right, so I think we can set that up, and we'll, we'll go from there. So we will be back in touch with you, and thank you all very much for coming down.
The issue is that they won't, they won't allow Gary to be our representative. McConnell, they all tell us, if you don't have him in work, we'll, we'll work with you, but you can't do that, we've hired him, he's not forcing us to do, he's helping us, he's trying to help us, he's our representative, and you guys won't listen, nobody will.
Well, I think if, if I, from what I found out today, I would say that Gary didn't have anything to do with getting the money. It, it happened through the delegation in Washington. If they're saying that, that you do not need to work with Gary, then you need to listen to them, because they're the ones that have the, the money. I, I'm, look, I'm not, I don't know, that's why you're sitting down here talking to us, and none of us know what's going on, you, but if, if Whitfield's office, or McConnell's office, or, or back then, Bunning's office, told me that you need to not work through a certain individual, I believe that's what I would do.
But do we not have that right?
Look, I, all right, well, we, I'm not going to, we can't get into that argument, but I tell you what we will do. We will, we will meet with Whitfield's office, and as a commission, and we will talk to them.
Through Gary, he's my representative, I hired him, we hired him.
What, what we'll do, we'll, we'll all, we'll all sit down, and we'll, we'll have a workshop.
With Gary, as our representative.
Gary will be here, Gary will be here, we'll have that workshop, Mayor, correct? Here at the commission, but we'll set up a special time to do that, and this will be the only topic, correct?
Correct. Thank you all very much. We are adjourned.